We're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Girl Scouts Troop 2642. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nature under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop 2642. We will now have the administrative oath of office. And we will have the swearing in of Sarah Derisse by our former mayor, Myra Andino, for two years as village trustee. Yes, you can clap. This is Sarah's beautiful family she has with her today.
The left hand on the Bible, the right hand up. Do you, Sarah Derisse, promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of New York, and do you promise to faithfully discharge the duties of village trustee in Tuckahoe?
I do.
Congratulations, trustee.
Sound, soundable. Congrats. Ask to stand here.
Okay, next we'll have Josh Gachion. Yes, sir, clap it up for Josh. He's a veteran, he's the veteran on the village board, and he represents us well.
Do you, Josh Gachion, promise to uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, and do you promise to faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the village of Tuckahoe?
I do.
Congratulations again. Welcome back.
And next, we'll have the swearing in of Kara Cronin as the mayor of Tuckahoe for a two-year term.
Repeat after me. I, Kara Cronin.
I, Kara Cronin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And do you promise to faithfully discharge the duties of mayor, this is the new mayor, y'all, of the village of Tuckahoe?
I do.
Congratulations, mayor.
Congratulations, Mayor Kara Cronin.
Good evening, Tuckahoe.
Y'all can clap it up.
On behalf of the whole village board, we welcome you tonight. We thank you for coming out. I would like to take a moment just to thank this village for showing up each and every time. I want to begin by thanking the residents of the village of Tuckahoe for placing trust in our team. To those who supported us, thank you for believing in our vision. And to those who did not, please know that your voices matter just as much. This team and I are committed to serving every single resident of the village of Tuckahoe regardless of how you vote. We are one village and one community, and our community depends on all of us moving forward together. Know that every decision that this team makes, we thought about, deliberated, and believe it is the best decision for Tuckahoe right now. And while we will not always agree, not the members of this board and not the whole community, I am certain that everyone here only wants the very best for this village, and I commit to working every day toward that end. I want to express my deep gratitude to Mayor Omira Andino for her years of leadership, her guidance, and the many ways she helped to shape this community. Her dedication to Tuckahoe has set an extraordinary standard, and I'm honored to continue to build upon that foundation that she's laid. When I was appointed by Mayor Andino to fill her board seat five years ago, I could not imagine filling her shoes. And I find myself in that position again tonight as mayor, once again promising to earn your trust every single day and hoping to live up to her examples and her expectations. As Lord knows, if I don't, she will absolutely have no problem calling me up and telling me what I should have done was. To my running mates, Sarah Derisse and Josh Gachion, I thank you for your hard work and integrity and your unwavering commitment to this village. You all are in for a treat. You know how hard Josh works. You know what a great man he is, and you are soon going to see what Sarah Derisse can do. I am proud to serve alongside you, and I know together we will make a thoughtful and meaningful progress in the years ahead. I also want to take the time to thank Scooter Scott for running a strong-spirited campaign and for his desire to serve our community. Civic engagement is what makes us stronger, and his willingness to step forward reflects how deeply people care about Tuckahoe. This night, tonight, is not about one person or one team. It's about all of us and what we can accomplish when we listen to one another, respect one another, and work side by side for the good of the community. I'm truly honored to serve you as your mayor, and I look forward wholeheartedly to the work ahead. I also just want to take a moment to thank all the people who showed up here from other parts of my life. So my work colleagues in the back, my friends from elementary and middle school, my mom, my brother, and his whole family. I really could not do this without all of you, especially to my mom. I just want to say thank you. There were many, many sacrifices that we all had to make. You have helped to raise our children so that I could chase my dreams, and I just want to thank you. I want to take this time to introduce our new colleague. Like I said, you all know Josh's work on this board. He has demonstrated hard work, commitment, and leadership. He has been an advocate for veterans and has brought back the Veteran Banner Program. We are deeply thankful to him, but you may not know Sarah, so I'm going to talk a little bit about her. Sarah's commitment to the community is evident in the way that she rolls up her sleeves to make Tuckahoe a better place. She founded and organizes the annual Village Tag Sale and has served the Eastchester PTA and is the current president of the Friends of the Library. Through her leadership and the ICANN Foundation, she has extended impact to our community's most valued group, our seniors. By supporting the Tuckahoe Senior Center, she has helped to expand programs and provide resources that enrich the lives of our residents. What this doesn't say is that she has raised tens of thousands of dollars to support our Tuckahoe seniors, and she does that every single year, so I just want to say thank you. Professionally, Sarah brings the skills of a successful small business owner and a real estate professional. She knows how to listen and to problem solve and to advocate on behalf of others. She understands that the role of trustee isn't just about policy, it's about people. So, thank you for joining us. At this time, I would like to invite trustee Gachion to say a few words if he'd like.
Sure.
About me, right?
Yeah. Thank you, mayor. Congratulations, first of all. We're all very, very happy for you. And thank you, Tuckahoe. Thank you for believing enough in us to give us the responsibility and the honor and the privilege of serving as your trustees again. I look forward to working with this board and moving forward, and that's really all I have to say. I'm ready to get back to work. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gachion. Sarah?
I'm going to roll up my sleeves for you, like Kara said. It's an incredible honor to be sitting up here tonight and be sworn in as trustee for the village of Tuckahoe, and especially alongside these incredibly intelligent, accomplished, and very good-looking people up on this terrace. I'm going to begin by thanking everyone who helped me get here. Many of you are out here in the audience tonight. Those who supported our campaign, knocked on doors, made phone calls, and believed in what we could accomplish together and what we have accomplished together here in the village of Tuckahoe. So thank you for believing in our vision and for making this all possible. To the residents, I want to thank you for putting your trust in me. In the last eight years, we've built a Tuckahoe where everyone has a voice, and I'm committed to working hard every single day to make our village stronger, more accessible, and more connected. Tuckahoe is a small but mighty place, and we are a shining example for those around us on how to build a strong, stable community where residents feel supported by their government instead of at odds with it or, at worst, apathetic about it. So thank you for that. This whole thing can only work, and it works best with engagement from you. And we're really proud that we have brought that into the fold here in Tuckahoe. So the only thing that we ask for you is that you come to us when you have a need or when you have a problem, because we can help you solve it. If you don't, all we can do is assume what needs to be done, and you know what happens when people assume. So I'm all in if you're all in, and I'm counting on you to help me throughout this process. To my family, thank you for your patience and your love and for putting up with all the craziness that comes with this journey. It's not easy having an activist in the family, but your support allows me to do the work that helps others thrive, and in that, we all win. I'm very excited for the work ahead and truly grateful for the opportunity to serve the village. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, if anybody from the audience would like to come forward and say a few words, I'll give you the opportunity to do that. Nobody. Okay. Oh, here we go. Just when you come up, please remember to state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charles Henderson. My address is in Johannesburg, South Africa, actually.
You came a long way for this.
I was born and raised here in Tuckahoe on Washington Street, and my U.S. address is 4 Union Place, which is where my mother lives. I met Omira when she was a trustee. I think that was 2019, if I'm not mistaken, right before COVID. And I spoke to Omira about her vision, and at that time, I think I suggested that she run for mayor. Now, Omira was very resistant to this idea at the time. So I said, "Listen, you can't do this on your own, so I'm going to introduce you to your wingman," and that was Darryl Taylor. So before I actually flew back to Johannesburg in 2019, I had Omira come to my mother's apartment at the senior building on Union Place. And I had Darryl come, and I said, "You two need to know each other." So I am very, very pleased to see that Omira's vision was not just realized, but that she has also... She has also been able to ensure that the work that she started continues. And Kara and Darryl, who I know well, are certainly the people to do it. And from what I gather, Josh and Sarah, you two will also be excellent wingman and woman. To the Top Gun, Kara, congratulations.
State Senator Shelley Mayer and Assemblywoman Pauline, a double treat.
Well, I think that we're both here just not only to congratulate you all, to congratulate Mayor Andino on extraordinary leadership that we have been proud to work alongside to deliver for the village of Tuckahoe. We look forward to Sarah, your service. Thank you for stepping up. To all of you and to our new mayor, congratulations. It is an honor to represent this very dynamic village and know that only good things are in the future. Through rocky times, Tuckahoe has stayed strong. Through the toughest times of COVID, this little village was barreling along, serving everyone, and I know that's the spirit that will continue under your leadership. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
All I can say is I'm compelling. For those of you who might not know what that is, this is a diverse village. You should. I'll leave it at that. I, too, I'm just feeling so proud and happy with Omira's great work. You couldn't go anywhere in Tuckahoe and not feel her presence. And the future leaders right here in front of me. I am just so thrilled because I know you're going to continue to lead Tuckahoe in just the right way for everyone who is here and for all the residents who are at home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Underhill, and I am a resident of Bronxville. I'm a trustee of Bronxville and serve as deputy mayor. Omira, just fabulous work, and we so appreciate the work you've done in bringing our boards together and having relationships, sharing ideas, sharing friendships, sharing support. You've done so much to bring us, the neighbors, together, so we're really appreciative of that. Kara, congratulations. I look forward to meeting you at some point. Sarah, Josh, congratulations. We so much enjoyed our dinner five, six weeks ago together and look forward to many more of those. And we're so grateful for the partnership between our DPW and our police departments. We are very, very important neighbors to each other. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. We look forward to our next dinner. Here, it's my treat, the next one.
I don't want to... If I were to start talking about how I feel, I'd be here till tomorrow. I want you to know I am so proud of you two women, and I invite everybody in here before you leave to go out into the hall and look at the portraits of the mayors from the beginning to now, and you'll see a really inspiring and startling ending. So proud of you two women because, you know, we know what women can do. Omira has shown it, and I know that you will pick it up and that we will just... I love this village, as you know. My family has been here since 1936 on 20 South High Street, and there's nothing about Tuckahoe that I don't love, the ups and the downs, but we stick together and we are proud and we're making history. Two women, I remind you, who are leading this beautiful village. And now, Kara, I am not even... I have no doubt that we will just continue the upward climb to even more and greater expectations. Congratulations, love.
Thank you. Okay. I want to thank everybody very much. Now we'll move on to the appointment and swearing in of Harmeet Goindi as trustee of the village of Tuckahoe to fill my unexpired term, which will expire next year. Left hand on the Bible, right hand up in the air. Switch sides. There we go. I, Harmeet Goindi, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Tuckahoe village trustee according to the best of my ability.
I do.
Congratulations. I don't have that memorized yet. So I am appointing Harmeet Goindi to take his seat. Those of you who don't know Harmeet, you're going to get to know him very quickly. He is extraordinarily engaged. Harmeet has been a resident of Tuckahoe for over 12 years and is deeply committed to fostering a sustainable, innovative, and inclusive future for the village. He co-founded and chairs now the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee, leading initiatives focused on green infrastructure, climate resiliency, and community engagement. Harmeet has also served as executive board of the Westchester County Soil and Water Conservation District and as the board of the STEM Alliance, a regional nonprofit aimed at expanding access to STEM learning opportunities for all. He was just today appointed by Congressman Latimer for his Infrastructure Task Force. Harmeet is a strong believer in the power of community and the arts to bring people together. This summer, Harmeet, he didn't just help organize, he organized the Tuckahoe Music Festival, an event celebrating local talent and civic pride. His civic engagement began years ago when he ran for village trustee in 2019, coming up just short, but he has continued to serve Tuckahoe through leadership, volunteerism, and advocacy. This is not somebody who just disappeared when he lost an election. He has shown up every single day for this village, and for that, we are very grateful. Professionally, Harmeet has built a distinguished career at the intersection of finance and technology, a chartered financial analyst with an MBA in finance from NYU Stern and a master's degree in computer and material science from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute. He has held senior roles at the leading financial institutions, including CBO Global Markets, Credit Suisse, and Bank of America. As an entrepreneur, he founded several fintech ventures focused on democratizing access to financial tools and developing responsible, transparent technology solutions. I'm not quite sure what that means, but it sounds great. Harmeet brings the same passion for innovation and responsible progress to his civic work. He believes strongly in community-driven problem solving and aims to strengthen Tuckahoe's position as a forward-looking, environmentally conscious, and family-friendly village. I think we are all very lucky to have and will serve and serve with Harmeet, and I am looking forward to the next year to see what he does. Harmeet and his wife, Arti, are proud to raise their three children here who attend elementary and middle and high school in Eastchester and in the village they call home, along with his parents. So, welcome, Harmeet. And if you'd like to say a few words, please go ahead.
I think you took... What I was going to say is what you just said, so it's going to be redundant, but thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kara, Mayor Omira, and the board for this incredible opportunity for me to serve. For those of you who I have not met, right, and I think Kara told you, but I moved to Tuckahoe 13 years ago, and we were welcomed with open arms here. And at that point, I knew that I wanted to give back to the community. So, as some of you remember, I ran in 2019 and came up short by about 20 votes, but, you know, losing that race was start of the real work. I realized I don't need a title to make a difference, and I just needed to roll up my sleeves, which is what I did over the past few years, and I had the privilege of turning that energy into action. So, as president of Tuckahoe's Environmental and Sustainability Committee, we worked along with the board and DPW, Frank, to launch various programs. The highlight of that was the food scrap recycling and the new community gardens, which has been very, very helpful for people who do not have access to a yard. And then again, as a board member for the Westchester County Soil and Conservation District, we secured funds for Tuckahoe to help protect Bronx River. And, you know, because I believe that a community needs to celebrate as much as work, I was proud to launch the music festival, and that was in September, and you will be hearing a lot more of that in coming years. Also, I'm deeply passionate about youth. I used to teach SAT math at a Tuckahoe library. I am serving in STEM Alliance to help underserved students. I believe in giving every child the tools to think critically. To my family, I also want to thank you. I know that it takes a lot to serve, and it takes time away from them. Thank you for your sacrifice and for being always in my corner. But, you know, none of this happens in vacuum. Everything we accomplish is because of the incredible staff we have here. So a big shout out to the DPW, the police department, the library, the community center, and the dedicated works of David, Gary, Camille, Jackie. And again, thank you all for trusting me with this seat.
Thank you, trustee Goindi. So yes, if anybody does have to run because there are bedtimes to consider, by all means, all the adults have to stay. I'm sorry. But if you have children and you need to take them home, I completely understand. As a newly appointed mayor, I was the deputy mayor for the last year, two years, and I have to replace myself in that capacity as well. So my first appointment is to... Can I get a motion to appoint Darryl Taylor as Tuckahoe village deputy mayor?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So be it. I just want to talk a little bit about why I chose Darryl. Darryl has proudly served the village and called it home for more than six decades. He was raised here. He has served as trustee from 2021 to 2023, and then again since 2024. His lifelong commitment to service is deeply rooted in his belief in giving back. For more than 30 years, he's volunteered with ECAP, including 13 years as a member of the Advisory Council. He has a strong faith and dedication to service guided by his leadership at Emmanuel AME Church, where he served as a steward, trustee, and treasurer. Additionally, he spent 12 years volunteering with Second Chance Ministries in Brooklyn, providing food, clothing to those in need, and has served 11 years as a deacon. His commitment to youth development is equally strong. He's coached almost every kid in this village. I go down the street with Darryl, and people stop me, and they're like, "Oh, coach, coach." So everybody knows him. Six years for youth football, 11 years across several leagues, and youth basketball for seven years. Darryl spent 18 years as a corrections officer, and he's also served as 13 years as a trustee on the Corrections Officer Benevolent Association Welfare Fund. Darryl Taylor's life reflects steadfast leadership, faith, and an unwavering dedication to serving others. He is quite possibly the most faithful person I have ever met. What impresses me most about Darryl is his dedication and work ethic. In the one year that he did not serve on this board, you would never have known the difference. He showed up every single day to every meeting, to every event, like it was his job. He served as a member of the Comprehensive Planning Committee and continued to volunteer for Movies in the Park and any other time that we needed a helping hand. We see you, Darryl, and we see the hard work that you put into this role. He is one of the most loyal people I know and certainly one of the hardest-working, and I am honored to consider him a friend and my deputy mayor. Would you like to say something?
After that, I don't think I need to say anything else. Okay, seriously. As many of you know, I've been a lifetime resident of this village, and I always say that I wouldn't trade growing up in Tuckahoe for any place else. that I wouldn't trade growing up in Tuckahoe for anyplace else. It was an awesome, awesome place to grow up. I've spent a lifetime here, helping to keep Tuckahoe safe, to protect the way that it should be, to make it as it should be, and I am so proud of this village, this board, what Omira Endino has started. We are here to continue it, and it is indeed an honor to be appointed the Deputy Mayor of the Village of Tuckahoe. So, I thank God for this now Madam Mayor, Kara Cronin, for choosing me as her deputy mayor, and then I thank God, because without him, none of this would be possible. I'm not going to go on and on, because it's a long night. Thank you so much.
We're going to try to make it not so long. By the way, when we are done, there is a reception afterwards, so if you can, stick around, please do so. We'd love to have some cake with you. Our second appointment for the evening is Associate Village Judge. Can I get a motion to appoint Michael O'Toole to Associate Village Judge for a term of one year?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, wait, let's do a roll call vote. Yeah. Cousin.
Aye.
In favor, sorry.
In favor.
First time.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Thank you, Judge. Judge. Do you want the Bible? The Bible's over here.
Right here. Right here.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office of Associate Village Justice.
That I will faithfully execute the office of Associate Village Justice.
Of the Village of Tuckahoe.
Of the Village of Tuckahoe.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, the United States Constitution to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States to the best of my ability.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Judge.
Okay. I'd like to thank our new mayor and the board for showing their faith in me once again. This is my 35th one-year appointment. I started out as acting village judge, now it's associate village justice. I don't know where it's going from there, but... And I remember the first time I was appointed, it was 1991, and when I saw trustee Joyce's kids over here, it reminded me that my daughters were two and five years old that night, and my older daughter just turned 40 last week, which I thought was impossible. That can't be right. Also here that night was my wife, Roseanne, who's in the audience. She's been here for all 35 of these. And our court clerk, Constance Kitataki, in the back, who actually makes our courts run. Without her, we would be lost, Judge Fuller and I, even though now, between him and I, we have over 75 years of serving Tuckahoe. Because he's been doing this longer than I have. So, I'd like to thank you once again, and I look forward to serving you again this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judge. Okay, so we have 25 other appointments, so we're going to do them as one big batch. I will call everyone's name, and then we'll do a vote. So, can I get a motion for the following appointments? David Burke, village administrator for a term of one year. Camille DeSalvo, receiver of taxes for a term of one year. Jackie Ferretti, deputy village clerk for a term of one year. Ryan Rueda, village treasurer for a term of two years. Michelle Licio, assessor for a term of one year. Gary Gertson, village attorney for a term of one year. Nick Zanzano, village historian for a term of one year. Eastchester Town Clerk, registrar of vital records, the Eastchester Town Clerk, for a term of one year. John Lee for the Assessment Review Board for a term of five years. Henry Suarez on the planning board for a term of five years. Don McMullin, planning board ad hoc, a term of one year. Antonio Leo, planning board chairperson for a term of one year. Anthony Fiori, zoning board for a term of five years. Eileen Puro, zoning board ad hoc for a term of one year. Tom Ringwald, Chair of the Zoning Board for a term of one year. David Ringler, the Sign and Honing Board for a term of three years. Laura Rafiani, Sign and Honing Board Chair for a term of one year. Jenny Steenhagen, Historic Preservation Commission, membership for a term of five years and as the Chair for a term of one year. Sorry, thank you. Karen Cashman, Library Board for a term of five years, thank you. Julie Girdan, Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee for a term of three years. Jenny Steenhagen, Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability Committee for a term of three years. Sam Konat, the Tuckahoe Environmental and Sustainability Committee for a term of three years. And John Paulo Enodi, the Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainability Committee Chair for a term of one years. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Congratulations to everybody, and I just want to take a moment to thank you all for serving our village. We know that a lot of you put time and effort into this, many of you as volunteers, and so we want to thank you for all of your hard work. We do have one or two board spaces available on different committees, and if people are interested, it would be great to hear from you, so that we know that you're interested. I believe, right now, we have the Assessment Review Board, we have a space there, and there may be some other things coming up. So, if you are interested in serving on a board or on a committee, we'd love to hear from you. Please let us know. You can reach out, you can contact the village, the village administrator, or myself, or any one of the people on this board, and we'd like to have a conversation about that. Moving on to presentations, we have two presentations today. The first one is the presentation, every time the mayor leaves office, we ceremoniously frame the glass of their door, and it has their name on it. So, we'd like to present this to Mayor Omira Endino.
Thank you. Go ahead. Everybody come up, so we can take a picture. The glass that was on her door, when she takes it out, it will be forward. This is the gavel that she was gifted, that we never, ever use it, except for the kids, when they come here from the elementary school to see the courtroom. So, here you go.
Did you lift weights?
Harmi, show the others.
Oh, yeah.
One second. Looks good.
And that was the calisthenics portion of our meeting. It's like church, up, down, up, down. Okay. Every year since 2023, the village has awarded the Marble Award to someone who has dedicated years of service to this community, strength of character. The Marble Award, we call it the Marble Award because Tuckahoe is so famous for its marble, if you aren't aware of that. And marble is very special because it is durable, and beautiful, and is consistent in terms of its strength. So, this year, we have decided to award posthumously to Deacon James Murray. Trustee Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just give me one second, James. I got a little house cleaning to do. I was doing my thank yous, and I forgot to mention my wife, Bibiana Rojas-Taylor, of 37 years. You got to keep the house in order. And my two daughters, Patience Rojas-Taylor, who is here right now, my other daughter, Faith Rojas-Taylor in Maryland, and my son, Daryl Rojas-Taylor, who is at work. Thank you, fellas, so much. The Marble Award is granted to a resident who exhibits more... One or more of the following qualities. Durable. He has made a meaningful contribution to the village. Strong. Exhibits strength of character and dedication to Tuckahoe. Tolerant. An inclusive member of the community who strives to improve the lives of his neighbors. Diverse. Works to strengthen Tuckahoe by supporting events that highlight our rich diversity. And last but not least, historic value demonstrates an ability to highlight and preserve local history. And we know this year's Marble Award recipient is none other than the Deacon James Murray, Senior. James, come forward.
2025 Tuckahoe Marble Award presented to Deacon James Murray. In recognition of a lifetime reflecting the enduring strength and resilience of Tuckahoe Marble, as a lifetime resident and pillar of our village, you have dedicated...
You have dedicated... Where am I at here? I'm not... I gotta get back on it. Okay, let me sort of... Thank you. In recognition of a lifetime reflecting the enduring strength and resilience of Tuckahoe Marble, as a lifetime resident and pillar of our village, you have dedicated decades of betterment of your neighbors. As a school board trustee, housing authority commissioner, and district leader, you built a foundation for our future. As owner of starving students, you provided employment to local men. As a youth leader at Shiloh Baptist Church, you guided young lives. We honor your service, unwavering commitment, deep roots, and lasting positive impact on the Village of Tuckahoe. Congratulations. Let's go see one real quick. I don't want to say too much, but Deacon Murray was definitely a pillar in the community, and he was somebody that I looked up to. I used to go visit him once every couple of months to give him updates on what was going on in the village, and he was so proud of me. He thanked me for running, for keeping up my mother's legacy, and he was just a huge impact on my life.
Thank you, everyone. For some of you that don't know me, the way Daryl introduced me, I am not James Murray, I'm James Murray Jr., okay? So, I don't have all of those accomplishments. But, very briefly, I thank everybody here, I thank everybody behind me, I know everyone. My dad would be very proud, we lost him June 28th this year, and everything that Daryl said, he was a pillar in the village. You can go to his house, he's there whenever you need him. If he doesn't have it, he's going to find it within an hour. He'll do anything for the kids. He was a basketball coach, excellent dad, great grandfather, great husband, and I'm proud to be James Jr., and I miss him, but he loved all of you, and he knew everybody in this room, and I thank you very much.
Congrats, James Jr.
Thank you. Would anybody like to say anything about Ms. Deacon Murray? I would like to say that we miss him every day, and we do think about him all the time. He was really a very inspiring man. I used to enjoy our conversations together, and we miss him all the time. Thank you. We have no public hearings, we're going to move on to the adoption of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the November 3, 2025 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. This is the first opportunity to address the board about agenda items. Does anybody have any... Anyone want to take an opportunity to address the board about agenda items? Okay, thank you. Resolutions. All right. Can I get a motion authorizing free short-term parking in the business district of the village to encourage local shopping during the holidays, from Monday, December 22 through Friday, December 26? Free parking, folks, first, out of the vote.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Authorizing service contracts with Teconic Heating and Cooling for Village Hall and the Tuckahoe Community Center HVAC equipment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Authorizing the readoption of the procurement policy on file with the village clerk?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? David, can you just tell people briefly what this is?
It's the doctrine that we purchase anything by. If we have to go out to bid for a public works contract, if we need three quotes, it's all spelled out here of what we need to do, the procedures that we need to do to purchase anything.
Excellent, thank you. Can I get a motion adopting the standard mileage reimbursement as set by the IRS, currently at 70 cents, subject to change in January 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Any opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Good. Can I have a motion adopting the attached calendar of the Board of Trustees meetings for 2026, with regularly scheduled meetings on the first Monday of the month, unless circumstances prevent such?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Can I have a motion adopting the designation of the following banks for the Village of Tuckahoe? Webster Bank, JP Morgan Chase, Wells Fargo Bank, and Metropolitan Commercial Bank?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Can I have a motion adopting the Eastchester Review as the official paper of the Village of Tuckahoe?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Can I have a motion authorizing the closing of the following completed capital projects? Number 2025-0166 Court Upgrades.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Last one. Can I have a motion authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $323,429.14?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll move on to departmental reports. Is the Chief of Police here? Lieutenant... Chief Broda, please come up. Sorry, I demoted you.
Good evening, Village Board. I'd just like to congratulate everybody on the board, Mayor Cronin, the new trustees, and the deputy mayor. We look forward to working you here at the PD, and it's been great meeting you all in the previous administration and throughout the village on different events, and it's going to be a great time, and we look forward to working together. This holiday season in your neighborhoods, you're going to see extra patrols of police officers going up and down the streets, preventing packaged stuff larcenies, which seems to be on the rise throughout Westchester County. We've been good here in the village, but deterrence is key to our crime-fighting strategy. So, you're going to see some extra patrols up and down the streets throughout the village in the holiday season. Moving on, our no-parking 3:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. in the business district is now in effect. It starts December 1st. So, for the first week in the business district, if you park, you'll get a warning summons to warn you not to do it again. And then, moving forward, starting next Monday, then summonses will be issued if the vehicle is parked between 3:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Moving on to snow zone parking signs. Moving on to snow zone parking signs. This week, we're going to start flipping the snow zone signs. I know it's... Winter's here. So basically, on all the side streets where you typically are normal snow zones, you're going to see signs now, red signs that say "snow zone," emergency parking. And the snow zone goes into effect at the start of snowfall. We post that, and also if you have any questions, always call the police department. We're here to help. The reason for the snow zones, and many people wonder why, why do we get a ticket for parking on a street with a snow zone? The reason for this is, is during the heavy snow and any type of salting production by the DPW, our trucks are very large and the streets need to be cleaned properly. And with the confined streets of the village, this gives access to our DPW workers to safely clean the streets and effectively clean the streets. And that's the reason for it. We're not out there looking to just give residents tickets. It's a safety issue for both ambulances, fire trucks, and to clean the streets safely. Moving on, our Lincoln Avenue and Oakland Avenue project was completed. So we went into contract with a local engineering company who we've used in the past. And they've recommended a... Regarding Lincoln Avenue, we've had complaints of people wanting a stop sign there and vehicles. Over the past five years, we've had several strong accidents there. And so we took the complaints, we looked into it, we hired an engineering company. And the engineering company came back with not putting a stop sign there. It didn't meet the criteria based on the speed, based on our accident history, based on our traffic flow. However, they designed a crosswalk at the intersection and also a traffic calming situation where we made lines in the roadway painted to calm the traffic down. And then with the pedestrian crosswalk and the signs, the project was implemented immediately once we got the results back from the engineering firm in-house. I'd like to thank our police custodian staff for implementing the project without us having to sub it out to a contractor. So we saved a lot of money. We corrected the condition. And this type of a project is why we get the AAA Safety Award each year. Reminds you, we got the Silver Award this year, which I'm super proud of. Because we take complaints, we look at the complaints, we verify the complaints, and we try to come up with a solution. And that's what this village is about, including our the police department. So overall there, we're seeing great positive feedback. We're seeing vehicles slow down, and we look forward to continued success. Moving on to our crime tip of the month. This past month, crime has been great in the village. Low numbers. However, fraud reports have picked up dramatically. That's throughout the nation, throughout New York State, and throughout the village. So I want to remind you, we hammer this home with the seniors when we see them. We recently posted on social media all the fraud tips, what not to do. But I just want to remind the public at this meeting and watching on TV that it's very rampant. Do not answer any personal information, no matter who they say they are or what the phone number shows, emails, text messages. These are professional scammers, and they're... All they do is try to steal your money. And unfortunately, the victims here in these cases are often elderly. So again, if you ever doubt anything by any phone call, text message, email, always contact the police department. We will verify it for you. We want to prevent this because once it happens, it's extremely difficult, not only in local policing, but in federal, in FBI, state police, it's difficult to track down. Oftentimes, they're not in this country, and the way they design these scams, it's difficult to make an arrest. So what we... How we attack this is through public, notifying the public and keep on speaking about it. So if there's one person in this room that remembers anything tonight, is a tip of this can save you a lot of money or your family members a lot of money, because it can happen to anybody, and we're seeing that. Moving on, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday season. Keep your eyes and ears open. Always please call us. We have a great village here. We're protected. We deter crime. We're out and about. Always call us, ask us questions. We're here to help. Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
Frank DiMarco, DPW Superintendent?
Wow.
We'll get applause tonight. Full of applause.
Well, Mayor Cronin, welcome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Darryl Taylor, welcome and congratulations. To the trustee members, congratulations as well. Sarah, welcome. And Harmeet, we've worked together in the past and looking forward to moving ahead in the future. So listen, I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you. I could stand here and talk about sanitation, leaves, Christmas lights. What else is there? All of the above and the snow, the uncomical snow, but listen, everybody knows what DPW does on a daily basis. So I don't really have to say much. If anybody has any questions, I'm always available. We're on top of our game every... Each and every day. I'm very proud of my men at DPW. With that said, each and every one of us at DPW would like to wish everybody happy holidays, happy and a safe holiday, and a Happy New Year and a safe one.
Thank you.
Ms. Elaine? Elaine is the acting director of the library.
First of all, I want to congratulate all of you. So excited to see you all. And new faces, not really new, because I know Harmeet, I know Sarah, and Darryl and Josh and Kara. Just thank you for... As someone who lives in the village, thank you for all that you've done for us and that you'll continue to do, and for the library. We know there were great things to come, and of course, to Omira for laying the track, laying the groundwork down that I know is going to be continued. So I have the honor tonight of introducing our new library director. We're excited to welcome Giovanna Fiorino Yanachi. She is a familiar face of the Tukahoe Public Library, having first joined in 2017 as a part-time reference librarian and has served as full-time adult programming and outreach librarian, too, at the Harrison Public Library for the past eight years before coming to us November 10th. Giovanna has continued part-time at Tukahoe as facilitator of the library's popular book club and as weekend reference librarian. She's highly regarded by both patrons and staff for her warmth, creativity, and deep commitment to lifelong learning. Prior to her career as a librarian, Giovanna was senior manager of the Antonio Ratti Textile Center at the Metropolitan Museum of Art, a position she held for 21 years. Besides her MLIS in library science, Giovanna has a PhD in art history and a master's in philosophy and art history, both from CUNY Graduate Center. Her knowledge and experience will ensure that the library continues to serve as the heart of the community and will contribute to the Tukahoe Public Library's ongoing growth, cultural enrichment, and success. Please welcome Giovanna.
Thank you very much, everyone, and I second Elaine's sentiments of congratulations all around. I'm short, so we have to lower this. I'm very excited to be here, and I know I'm filling very special, very important shoes. And I will try to live up to my predecessors' success. So I had the fun part of giving you highlights of some of the programs that the library is offering this month. And as all of you most likely know, the library is open to the public, to everyone and anyone who would like to come in and read or browse our collection or attend a program. So what I'd like to do is give you some of the highlights of the programs that we're offering in December, in this month. One of our most special and important programs is taking place this Wednesday, which is December 3rd at 6:00 p.m. And it's with the Lenape Center, with founding member and executive director of the Lenape Center, Joe Baker, who will discuss the history, culture, and colonial era of the Lenape people. So you can register for the program, but you also can just walk in. And I'll just briefly mention a few, since I know it's getting late and people probably want to head home shortly. So if you like music, we have an online opera talk, La Boheme, by Giacomo Puccini, on Thursday, December 4th at 2:00 p.m. We have Calligraphy with Nancy Favorito in the library, Saturday, December 6th at 2:00 p.m. We have online Rules for Understanding AI Language Models with Datta Safrar, and that's Wednesday, December 10th at 6:00 p.m. We have a hybrid memoir writing program, which Elaine Provenzano facilitates, and that'll be online and in person at the library, Thursday, December 11th at 1:00 p.m. Online Party Hardy in the Middle Ages with art historian Mike Norris, Thursday, December 11th at 7:00 p.m. And we also have Jane Austen Books and Tea, again with our wonderful Elaine Provenzano on Saturday, December 13th at 1:00 p.m. Also Hanukkah Lachas with our librarian Miriam on Friday, December 12th at 3:30. So ongoing, reoccurring programs for adults, just naming a few tech help one-on-one appointments, which I know a number of our senior community benefits from. And that's every Thursday at 2:00 p.m., except for December 25th. You can call the library to book a free half-hour appointment with our tech specialist. And we also offer the Tai Chi with Chifu Alex Lamas in the community center on Tuesdays. That'll be December 2nd and 16th at 9:00 a.m. Something for the teens, we have junior and teen sewing classes, and they're making fleece hats and scarves with one of our instructors, sewing instructors, Nicole Cavallino. And that is on Mondays, December 15th and 22nd at 4:00 p.m., ages 8 to 17. We do have a teen movie night, Wednesday, December 17th at 6:00 p.m. And it's Tim Burton's A Nightmare Before Christmas, ages 11 to 17. And for children's programs, we have a numerous, numerous number of repeating programs. And we also have paws and tails in the library, Monday, December 15th at 3:30, ages 3 and up. And it's a wonderful way for children to get comfortable being around dogs. These are therapy dogs with the Good Dog Foundation. We have holiday cookie decorating in the community center, Tuesday, December 16th at 4:00 p.m., ages 4 to 10. Legos at the library, Thursday, December 18th at 3:45 p.m. And last but not least, we have a special holiday story time with Mayor Cronin in the community center on Tuesday, December 16th at 11:00 a.m., ages 0 to 5. And I wanted to mention our museum passes, which is something that the friends of the Tukahoe Library support and sponsor for us. These are library... Sorry, museum passes that are available to anyone who has a Tukahoe library card. So I know you're planning to have family over, maybe your kids are off from school, you want to have a fun field trip. You can reserve a museum pass through the library, which includes the 9/11 Memorial Museum, Museum of Natural History, Hudson River Museum, the Intrepid, and so on. So keep that in mind when you're planning your vacation time. And as you all know, these are all free programs. All of this information is available on our website, which is Tukahoe... I believe it's tukaholibrary.tukah.com l library. And you can always reach us via the phone. Thank you very much, and best wishes to everyone for a wonderful holiday. Thank you for the warm welcome.
Thank you. Giovanna, on behalf of the board, we want to all thank you and welcome you to Tukahoe. I know you've worked with us for a while, but we are excited for new things to come, and it's really a pleasure to get to know you. So thank you. Camille, do you have anything? Taxes, I know. Taxes, taxes.
I'm the bad person. I'm sorry. First, congratulations, and thank you for reappointing me. And I just want to remind everyone that the village taxes are due December 31st. Sorry.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Camille. David, anything?
No, nothing specific. Just want to say congratulations, Mayor Cronin, the new board. Looking forward to working with you over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Barry?
Same thing. No report tonight, but congratulations to everybody up there and look forward to a good upcoming year.
Excellent. Thank you. Judge, do you have anything to say? Okay. So miscellaneous business, Winter Fest is this Saturday, December 6th, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Depot Square. We light the village tree around 8:00. There's caroling. Santa comes on the fire truck. You have to see it. It's a thing. Please do. Make it out. Rain or shine. Well, rain or not, you know, it's nighttime by then. We'll be there regardless. Please come. The next village board work session is January 8th at 7:00 p.m. And the village board meeting, January 12th. So this is the last one for the year. And then we will reconvene January 12th at 7:00 p.m. Moving on to trustee member reports, we may not have many. Trustee Doris, you have anything?
Just quickly, I am going to be the liaison to the Tukahoe seniors. They are very special and have a special place in my heart, so I'm really excited to be working with them going forward. I did have the pleasure of attending the Thanksgiving brunch that they held last week at Father Faddle Hall. We had a special visit by Supervisor Cole Avita, who raffled off lots of gift cards for the seniors to buy some of their Thanksgiving goodies, and we were thankful for him to come by. And that's all I got right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gachion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll be quick. We'll start with the history committee. The beta version of their website is up and operational. We look forward to the launch, which will be IRL in January. That's in real life, as the kids say. So in January, we're looking forward to that. They also had over 18,000 views on their social media pages this month. And Ms. Elaine, I kind of have a bone to pick with you, because I think you would have had more views if you would have had my face on there, because I was at one of the events that... No, did a great job of cataloging everything that you did this month. So great work. And as always, the history committee meets on Wednesdays right here at Village Hall at 9:30. Move on to Historic Preservation Commission. They adjourned their meeting for November and will be meeting again in January. November was Veterans Month. We had lots of love for veterans in November, all the time, but in November. So thank you. Couple of things coming up. We have Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day, which is Sunday, December 7th at 7:55 a.m. at the Eastchester Town Hall. All are welcome. And on December 13th at the Kinsicodan Plaza at 1:00 p.m., we have Reeds Across America. And that's it. I wish everybody a safe and happy holiday season and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Goine, did you have anything?
Nothing much, given that I am very new. But one thing I would like to sort of remind people, that we have a community garden program in collaboration with TSC and DPW. And the registration is due every year, so it was subscribed fully this year. And if you want your spot, you have to come and subscribe again, and it opens around March or April. So we'll announce that, but keep an eye out for the email.
Thank you. All right, trustee Taylor, just remember, there's cake soon.
All right. I'll make it fast. Eastchester Community Action Partnership. Thanks to the community partners and their generosity, ECAP was able to distribute 180 Thanksgiving baskets last week. Yes, that deserves a round of applause. We are now getting ready for our Christmas food distribution for families in need on December 17th and also for the toy distribution on December 19th. The 38th Annual MLK Breakfast will be on January 19th at the Reform Church in Bronxville. This year's theme is the Power of First. This is ECAP's only major fundraiser for the year, and they... And we rely on so many who have supported our organization over the years. For more info on how to donate or sign up for the Christmas food distribution, to donate or sign up for the toy drive, or for the MLK breakfast, please call ECAP at 914-914-9144. or sign up for the toy drive, or for the MLK Breakfast, please call ECAP at 914-337-77768. The Tuckahoe Housing Authority, Nancy Height Norde, who I believe is here, was newly elected as the Tuckahoe Housing Authority Board Chair. Tahisha Jackson is, yes, you can clap for that, is the newly elected co-chair. The president, executive director, Irene Misviki, is retiring as of December 31st, 2025. The Board of Commissioners developed a satisfaction survey and distributed to all the residents. The chair and the vice chair toured the authority and introduced themselves to the residents. A search committee for the new THA executive director has been established. The committee has developed a job description and posted on appropriate job sites and shared it amongst their individual networks. The search committee is currently interviewing candidates for the THA director position. The election for the tenant commissioners will be held on December 12th. That is all I have. Happy holidays to everyone and their families, happy New Years, and enjoy your holiday season.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Taylor. First, I want to finish out with my mayor's report by saying, go Tigers!
Oh, yes.
So the Tuckahoe Tigers have made it to the state final in football, and so we are all rooting for them, and hopefully, you know, we see them next, next month as champions here in this, in this room. This will be my last report as the senior liaison. The seniors will be hosting their annual party in-house at Father Fata Hall on Tuesday, December 9th. I want to give a big shout out. I called Mike from Tucked Away, Mike Quazo from Tucked Away, last week and said, I have 11 seniors that need Thanksgiving meals because they're homebound and they are alone. And he said, no problem, and, you know, donated all those meals. So I just want to say thank you. It is the businesses in this community that keep us strong. Anytime we reach out to businesses, they answer the call, and so, big shout out to Jamal. I want to say thank you to trustee Gachion for helping to arrange the marble award for Deacon Murray. These things take a lot of effort, and so, big thank you to him. I have a student here who came all the way from Brooklyn, and I just want to shout out Jamal, because it's really just so thoughtful that you came to watch me get sworn in. So Jamal, say hi. I'm going to put him on blast right now. This is Jamal right here. But, you know, my students, in my other life, I am a professor at CUNY, and my students mean everything to me, so just a huge thank you to them. And then I would be remiss if I don't end today without thanking my husband Quinn and my two children, Zan and Selene. They are the light of my life, and they share their mother and their wife with this village, and it is a lot, I know, I am a lot. I recognize that. I am a big ball of energy, and it's messy, and it's awkward, and I thank them for being so loving and caring and sharing me with this village. And that is the end of my report for this month. We move on to the last thing, the second opportunity to address the board, if anybody would like to come forward.
Good evening. My name's Anthony Laurie, lifelong member. First, I want to congratulate all the board members, you too, Judge. I just want to back up for a minute. Want to talk about Jim Murray's father. He was a true gentleman, a true member of this village. He even ran for trustee on this, on this board. But Jimmy meant a lot more to me. I played football from Tuckahoe High School in 1965. In them days, we didn't have what they have today. We had a lot of old junky equipment, and we had a tough coach. I could relate to the people in the back, they'll remember Coach Bronze and Mr. Fenton. They were the coaches in them days. And I had a big head, not a glorious one, just a super head. And they couldn't find a helmet for me. We went through everybody's helmet, and we couldn't find one. And then the coach said, I think I got one. And he put it on me, he says, try this. I tried it, he says, fits great. Okay, that's yours. I took it off, I said, wait a minute, this belonged to Jimmy Murray. I can't wear that. He was a superstar for Tuckahoe, because I remember him playing ball. Anyway, I had that helmet. It was old, it was junky. And I got hit a couple of times in the head, and it cracked on the side. Well, I taped it up, and then one day, we were practicing, and it fell down, and the helmet literally broke off my head. And I got in trouble for wearing that. I said, but Jimmy Murray's going to get awful mad if he finds out his helmet is being tossed out. Anyway, we only had two games, and they were going to order me a helmet. They found one that fit me only for when we were walking on the field. Otherwise, I had to take it off, because it was too tight. So I thanked Jim for your dad's helmet, and I got to say, it was a true, true gentleman, that man. He is part of Tuckahoe. They lived right next door to the village hall, and he had good parents. I remember when your grandparents used to wheel you in the carriage over there. So I got to tip my hat to the Murray family.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, Deera Herbert Ramos, Mayor of New Rochelle.
So, Deera Ramos Herbert, Mayor of the fabulous city of New Rochelle, though tonight I get the Tuckahoe vibes, I will, I get it, I get it. And I just wanted to take a moment to formally thank Omira and Dino for her leadership and friendship. There is a sister mayor bond. I met you actually, helping to campaign for Renee, go back. But certainly, the opportunity to serve with you as my friend, with my confidant, someone I can call and just say anything to in a way that only other mayors, women, women of color mayors can understand, is something that I will carry for the rest of my life. So thank you for your friendship, friend. And you, Kara, just excited to have another lady in the gang. It really, you know, we have borders, we have boundaries, but when there's collaboration among municipalities, all of Westchester benefits. And so as much as we rep our hoods, if you will, I think you guys are more sophisticated here, maybe you don't say hood. It is cool to be able to trade ideas, bounce ideas, just quickly get on the phone. And again, it just makes us stronger, our kids stronger, our seniors stronger. So I just wanted to formally comment and extend my thanks to you. As for your friendship, really, you're tough. You are a tough, solid woman, and it's really, it was really good to always see that and know that you got it, and to welcome you formally to the tribe, Kara.
Thank you. Mrs. Billups?
I just got to close and make an announcement. Tuckahoe's Max Pierce, my grandson, who's with Harlem Globetrotters now and with others, will be on CBS December 30th. He is now an artist, they're presenting him, The Art of an Athlete. And it's, I think it's like an eight-minute segment, and in it is a piece about his grandmother. And I just wish everybody in Tuckahoe could tune in, December 30th, CBS, 9 o'clock in the morning, to see Tuckahoe's Max Pierce. Thank you.
Hey there. Julie Girdon, 56 Oakland Avenue, a very appreciative neighbor of our new wonderful Fisher, no, Lincoln Avenue, Oakland Avenue, stop stuff, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I just wanted to come up really quick, I promise, and take a moment to appreciate this new incarnation of our village board, everyone stepping into their roles tonight. Kara, your energetic, extra, and community-centered leadership will set the tone for all of us for years to come. Josh, your strong and emphatic advocacy will continue to make a real impact in Tuckahoe and Westchester and beyond. Sarah, your genuine care for our community will inspire all of us, each of us, to help where we can. And Hermine, it's exciting to see you from this perspective in this meeting, and I know you'll bring energy, renewable energy, and an astute perspective that we'll all benefit from. Daryl, thank you for stepping into the role of deputy mayor with dedication and heart and with a strong moral compass. To all of you, I am just so proud of everything you've done thus far, and I'm proud of what Tuckahoe will accomplish with your leadership.
Thank you. It is fire election time.
Good evening, everyone. Anthony Fury, three different places, Tuckahoe. First, I want to say congratulations, Mayor Cronin, Deputy Mayor Taylor, trustees, Gachion, Derisse, and newly appointed, congratulations, good luck. And thank you on my reappointment as zoning board member. I've been doing this since 2017. I started as ad hoc, and I filled in someone's shoes a few years back. Forgot who it was. I think it was Paladina, I'm not really sure. But this is my first, first five full years. And congratulations, Mayor Omira. Good luck on your endeavors. Enjoy. And now, to the fun part. Next week, December 9th, there's another election here, Fire Commission's elections. It's for Eastchester, Tuckahoe, Bronxville, the whole townwide thing. Anybody living in Tuckahoe votes for it at the community center, anybody in Bronxville votes at Bronxville Village Hall. Eastchester is split. Depending on where you live, it's Eastchester Library or the Leroy Gergari Post in 40 Bell Road. If you're not really sure, Eastchester Park, it's Eastchester, eastchesternewyorkfd.gov. You can find your election district, but mostly, if you voted last year, you know where to go. I am on the ballot. This time, every vote counts, because this is a three-way again. Hopefully, weather's supposed to be cold, but not snowing or anything, so hopefully, get out. Do your part, you pay taxes here, that's part of it. And also want to say, happy holidays and New Year. Enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Omira and Dino, 14 Westview Avenue. I have not done this for eight years, haven't been on this side of the podium, and I kind of like it. It's a nice view over there. I have to tell you that I am beaming with pride tonight. Everyone kept asking me why I'm smiling so much, and they thought that it was because I'm ready to get out of here, but it's really because I'm so proud of each and every one of you. I don't think people really understand the powerhouse that is sitting at this dais. This is a board that can run communities that are 100 times the size of Tuckahoe. And I want you all to really take a moment and take that in, and really understand that the people that you have before you could be doing so many things, but they chose to do this. So I just want to thank you. I want to say that I consider you all friends. And I want to acknowledge that Kara Cronin is not just Kara Cronin, she is Mayor Dr. Kara Cronin. So we should respect that and honor it. So thank you all. I look forward to you guys doing great things, and Kara's right, I will call you on occasion and say what you should have done was.
But I'll call you first and ask you, what should I do? All right, with that, yeah, come on up, Nick.
Never easy to follow up, Mayor and Dino, but, you know, looking at this board brings an extreme amount of pride. Something that could be said amongst all of you, except for Josh, you're a little bit of the outlier here, but in a good way. You've all came up short in an election previous to this, and you all kept engaged, you continued to work for the community, you volunteered your time, time and time again. So with that, I think it speaks to the character of all of you and how much Tuckahoe appreciates you guys, and we are grateful to have you here. Two groups of people that I would like to thank is, I think a lot of people don't know what goes into your role, but as being your friend and someone who's worked on your campaigns, is your families, who sacrificed a lot in order for you guys to be up here, so thank you to them. And all of the volunteers who have helped through all of your campaigns over the years, thank you to all of them as well. So congratulations. And if I could just leave one story about our new mayor. I had an event planned earlier this year, and Kara, of course, was going to come. And last second, I get a text from her, and it says, an elderly neighbor of mine just kind of passed out in front of her, and she had to go to the hospital with her. And I think that says a lot about Kara as an individual who doesn't care about your political background, doesn't care about, you know, anything that has happened in the past, who you may have voted for, whether you voted for her or not, but she's going to be there. And I have the full trust that you're going to be here for Tuckahoe. So thank you very much, and again, congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. With that being said, if there's nobody else, we will adjourn this meeting. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a healthy and a happy New Year. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Tuckahoe. Good night.